Okay, it's April 29th at 7:00 PM. The Emmitsburg Planning Commission meeting is now in order. We'll start our meeting with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One big republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first order of business is review and approval of last meeting's minutes. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? Seeing no questions, does anyone make a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes?
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor of the approval of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, five to oh, minutes are accepted. Okay. Our first order is then is public comment. Diane, you want to talk now or when we get ready to discuss it?
When you do.
Okay, that's what I figured, so I wanted to ask. Okay, moving on to our old business, the first thing is our comprehensive plan update. Staff, you want to go with that?
Yeah, sure, so um, as you can see, the current draft is still a work in progress and we're aiming to have everything ready by the next meeting presentation. Several of the comments from the planning commission have been addressed while some of them are still being incorporated. And so for now, we're seeking some feedback on the vision statements that are in chapter 10, 11, and 12, which were shaped by the workshops held in October, January, and March. So that feedback would be valuable for guiding the subsequent sections involving implementation strategy.
Okay, Diane, you want to see what you got on it?
Yeah.
You can come to the podium.
Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. Hello, um, okay. So I reached out, as you may or may not know, I was a little under the weather for a while, so I wasn't able to do all the outreach that I had hoped to the to the institutions here in town. So I did start last week and invited the person who's in charge of the facilities up at the National Emergency Training Center, as well as the superintendents of both of schools up there, to see if we could have a meeting. I copied Najila and Kathy and every, I should have copied you, sorry. I, I will send you a copy tonight. But I just said, you know, Emmitsburg is working on its comprehensive plan and you know, you guys are an important, even though you're not really in the town, you're an important part of what's going to happen here and in the future, and we'd like to hear from you. So I gave them a couple of open dates this week and next week. So I'm hoping that we can actually sit down and have a meeting with them, and I'm hoping Najila and maybe Kathy can go, and Frank said he'd go too, if he was available. So, but I think it's important to reach out to them because before we were talking about the fact that they have a lot of people who work there. And we don't know what percentage of them live in town, but it's not very many, especially of the professionals. So, you know, we wanted to get some more information about what that meant and why they weren't considering living in town. Is it a lack of housing? What is it? You know, is it the taxes over in Pennsylvania that are drawing them over there? So, but anyway, I think it's important to sit down with them and actually listen to what they have to say. I also reached out, anybody that I've talked to over the last two weeks, I asked them if they want to have a copy of the surveys. And so I send them to them, but I also give them the link. So I say, you can either submit it that way, or you can submit it through me and it'll be anonymous and then I'll submit it to the town. So I'm trying just to make sure that we get as much public input as we can. Because I think we've got some solutions here in town that maybe, maybe you guys have already thought of addressing, but maybe not, and I just haven't been to enough meetings, like the flooding that's over on Annandale Road. We have experts in mitigation come to classes at the National Emergency Training Center. Why not talk with one of their instructors and see if we can do a field trip? And come out and have them look at the situation? And maybe make some suggestions? That could even be like a homework assignment. I mean, you know, I, I think there's some things we can do to really get the input that we want to make this a dynamite plan that really reflects everybody. I also, and I haven't done it yet, but I also want to reach out to the, the two senior centers and the, and the people who live at the Old Slagle Hotel and the business owners and just people who are around, who might have opinions, but would never, ever, ever come to a town meeting and probably wouldn't look on the website. So if I was a little frightened when Najila said she's going to have the, the next draft ready by the next meeting, is that still firm?
That is right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I got to get husband. Anyway, and, and I talked to Dawn, Dawn was going to reach out to the businesses and said, things have gotten in the way and he didn't get as much opportunity to do that as he wanted to. But maybe if all of us just ask the question, hey, have you thought about the comprehensive plan and where we want to be in 10 years or 20 years? And hand out the surveys and see what people think. I don't know. Anyway, and then I have a couple of things that I did notice, but some of them are just like little sections. So I should probably just give those to Najila. But I apologize for not copying you guys when, should I copy you or everybody on the planning commission or?
Me, I mean, I'm getting the notices of the small working group. I get the notice a lot because I'm part of the small working group and everything, but if it's something more than that, you know, you need to copy at least Najila and myself on them.
Okay, yeah, and I just did not.
Yeah, it's outside of a small working group since, what, there's five of us in that small working?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so anyway, but, but I'm excited about what we can do with this and some of the resources that are available. I mean, Economic Development Administration, I don't. Anyway, there's a lot I don't know because I haven't been to town meetings and I've been remiss in that, but. Anyway, thanks, do you guys have any questions for me or?
Question, I think, is you should have been seeing, we're on our fifth round trying to get the business community. Our fifth round of emails and questionnaires going out now, so not getting a whole.
See, I didn't, I, I'm not on that list.
Okay, so we're on our fifth round of trying to get people to speak back. And so a couple of people spoke, a couple of people talked to me, but it's, you know, you can count on one hand.
Yeah, well, I got somebody else who said, yeah, about the college students being a real problem.
You could give the family on the Lions, get them rattling their cage.
Yep.
Miss President.
Yep, I will, so, anyway, thank you, and I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Diane. Hey, does anybody else in reviewing the plan as it stands now have questions on the information there or changes they think need to be made or information that's missing?
Dale? I got a couple. I just wondered if you ever considered having a total of the percentage on the bottom of the, it's page 12. It shows age and then a gender profile. If you possibly put a total of each side. Is that possible?
Yeah, we can do that.
That just ought to be ideal, you could tell how many, that's just one thing, okay? I got six more. But one of them's a question more than anything else. Oh, on page 31, you got 35 foot frontage on high density. It should be 35 dash foot and under 10 foot back, it should be 10 foot side, correct?
Right, you did point that out before I, that, that's all we're saying.
And then when you get around to where it says 30 foot rear setback, you usually have been putting rear yard and you left that word out. See, from the next line?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see here. Yeah, I want this, I was marking it up as I went through. Let's see, page 46. I was questioning is 750,000 gallons, that the max for the sewer system, you know?
Say that one more time?
750,000 gallons down, second paragraph, you got, it says treatment capacity is 750,000 gallons. Is that for the whole system because you're not using the whole system, you know?
I'll have to check that with the water and sewer department.
Okay.
Yeah.
I asked that question because my son works there. All right. Another thing. On page 49, I noticed you're talking about the food bank. Is there any way would you consider putting the location of the current food bank so people would know?
I could do that.
All right.
Just a question on that, can we list that since we're talking about a 10-year plan? And it's likely to change within that 10 years?
Well, this section kind of talks about what's there right now, so really it's up to you. Would you like me to include it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's helpful in there, I just wasn't sure if it would create confusion if we have it in the plan and it moves and it's not there.
All right, well, that's something to consider. Oh, another one. I'm on page 51, there's nothing there. I noticed you you, on the previous, let's see, on, on 49, you got public consistence. Talk about the conductor, Pregnancy Center, Seaton Center. And there's nothing mentioned anywhere about Seaton Village and Lincoln on the Park. Is there someplace we could mention them because that's, it's subsidized by the federal government. It's a, it's a help for local residents, including myself and Dan. So I just thought that might, might be a good idea to include it.
Okay, yeah.
Right? Let's see here. Oh, on page 53, you mentioned that the decorative fountain is not in the center of the square anymore. Would you consider mention that is at Frederick? It's a city of Frederick at Seventh and Market right now? That's where they, they got a park even around it. That ties Emmitsburg into Frederick City a little bit. So that's where it's supposed to be, that's supposed to be that. One last item coming up, let me find it here. Oh, you mentioned at the bottom of 59 that install three free electric charging machines or charging stations, I'm sorry. Now, is that you're implying that it's free? Is it free to somebody use or just free? It didn't cost any anybody in the town to install it? What, what do you mean by when you say free? I mean, if I had electric car, which I don't ever intend on having, but if you're saying I could go back there and charge it free?
Oh, I see what you mean. I actually don't know.
I'm asking a question, I don't know.
I can. Yes, they're free to use, I put my test.
What I wanted to know, thank you, that's everything I got.
Any other commissioners have any questions on it?
Najila, I know we spoke about possibly adding the Community Legacy Grant in here as part of initiatives or historic, something to that effect, but I don't, is it in here somewhere and then I dismissed it?
No, I haven't had that yet, yeah.
I know, I think I saw it in there as it relates to the revitalization of Main Street, but not, I don't think specifically housing.
Anything else?
I have a few.
Yeah, nothing, nothing else. Only, Najila, when do you expect like the other information on the percentage of properties and tax on the numbers? When do you expect to have all those numbers?
Oh, so I do have those numbers, I just have to put them in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as we have it, because that's the one thing people ask. I get nailed on that in the Alice limit all the time.
I have a few whenever you're done.
Okay.
First, thank you. It's, it's coming together, so it's kind of interesting to see it all put together and and thank you for printing out the copy because it's easier to, to navigate. Okay. So I, I noticed on page four, it says there are going to be 13 chapters. Do we know what the 13th chapter is going to be? Or is it now limited to 12?
Sorry, that, it's not to say 12, not 13.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. I think we've kind of talked about this before and maybe I was confused first time and still confused. On page eight, the, the total population of Emmitsburg, it has a footnote for one, which says Town of Emmitsburg 2015 Comprehensive Plan. Does that apply? Well, it can apply to 2020 because we didn't have a comprehensive plan. So does the, does the footnote for total population, what years were pulled from the 2015 comp plan?
So from 1960 to 2000.
To 2000.
Yeah. But I can indicate that.
Okay. Page 12, the population growth rate. I think maybe Patricia mentioned it before, somebody did about putting male first and female second. So the blue, so it lines up with the colors.
Not sure why Excel doesn't let me do that, so I'll have to use Photoshop.
Okay, well, if you can't then.
Yeah.
Um, the bottom of page 13, figure 2.6 on the bottom, I think should be figure 2.7. Page 14 should be figure 2.8 at the top. Um. I think where it says in the middle of the page, at Emmitsburg, the prominent age group of 20 to 24 and a size and a sizable demographic below the age of 40 point. I think just a comma after 40, because otherwise I read it all in like 40 point, which doesn't make sense. And then the last paragraph on page 14, bottom of page 14, the relatively high portion of the female population, I think it either should be percentage or proportion. And daughters of, let me see, what's this note say? Oh, do we need to clarify this? As noted in the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, the reorganization of the Members of Daughters of Charity. That's why the female population was reduced. Do we need to clarify what that was? The reorganization of the Members of Daughters of Charity that reduced the female population or?
We can do that.
I, I don't know what it means.
I'll have to double check what the 2015 Comprehensive Plan says about their reorganization. But I know there was a general sentence about it, but there was more details.
So I guess the reorganization increased the female population?
Decreased the.
Decreased.
They sent half their staff to St. Louis.
Yeah, right, I think it could be that, you know, their headquarters moved to St. Louis. It's just a minimal line without going into it.
Okay, because the reorganization is tied to the high percentage of females. So perhaps it's two different things that were the first sentence on the bottom, bottom of page 14 in that last paragraph. So we're tying the reorganization to the percentage of females, so it sounds like it's two different things.
It's two different things because we lost a large percent of females that were under that age group that moved to St. Louis. And then so the remaining females in town that age counted disproportionately higher.
So maybe just kind of clarify.
Okay.
Because I think I'm still confused.
We can clarify that.
On page 17, I think we just need figure legends added. On the page 17, I guess next to the last sentence, from their, so a substantial portion of the workforce must travel considerable distances from the residents to earn a wage. Do we want to put living wage? Page 18 and 19, just a figure legend or table legend. On page 23, I, I don't think I could read the print with a magnifying glass. Is it possible to make that table an entire page or?
So.
Do we just want to take, I don't know if we need the words.
Yeah.
It's really small.
Oh, um, so what we can do is keep that there and then as an appendix, we can add a larger map that shows. Yeah.
And then the last paragraph on page 23, where it says in the center depicted in figure 7.3? I think that should be 4.3.
Right, yeah.
I wanted to ask, page 39, first paragraph, we talk about Collector Roads. And I noticed Brookfield Drive is on there and I've heard discussions before about Brookfield Drive. Um. Calling, I guess we've classified, the town is classified, Brookfield Drive is a collector road, but it's really a neighborhood road. And I don't know where the discussion should even go for that. I mean, do we need to, has, have we talked about reclassifying it?
Well, that was part of the original plan when the developer submitted it. That was his intention and how he got it approved as is that to be a collector road. So can you go back and would that have to do with the charter we have on the development of the community then if we start opening that up?
Yeah, it should be there, our dashboard and what, yeah.
Possibly. That, that sounds like a me question.
Yeah.
Into. And, and I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I know a lot of the properties and how the roads were all part of the original plan and how it got approved and it was pulling teeth to get there.
Yeah, I think we've had discussions before about, you know, parking on Brookfield Drive and the speed limit there as well as maybe putting speed bumps on Brookfield Drive to slow the traffic down. But I, I think those things have to do with or not being able to do those things have, has to do with it being considered a collector road. Um. But to me, it's a neighborhood street, just like all of the streets within Pembroke or within Brookfield or Silo Hill or.
I think the original thought was that to be the collector, once the connection was made to Irish Town and everything, it'd be that straight thruway to get in for people coming through there to leave traffic. That was the original assumption.
That we would send traffic from Irish Town.
Well, no, Irish Town Road could come through there now with the connections, Irish Town through the Brookfield Development. They could use that as alternate routes, so that's why it was, one of the ideas why it was a collector road. Cut through there now with the next approval of the development at Silo Hill or coming through at the community so they don't have one entrance. It'll be on the Irish Town Road.
Maybe it's something we can look into in the future.
Yeah, I think we have to check the legal to make sure that since it was approved that way, if we go back and start.
Calling it something different, is that going to be a problem? Yeah, no, I, I see the point, I'll look into it.
Thank you. Um, page 44, where we talk about Emmitsburg Community Park, do we want to add disc golf? I know we talk about tennis, pickleball, cornhole. I'm not sure if there's anything else missing. I haven't utilized the parks in a while, but I know we have disc golf now.
I mean, yeah, we could put the disc golf in there, we have the fitness trail.
Dog park.
Oh, dog park, yeah.
Yeah.
Forgot about the dog park. Okay, dog park and fitness trail. On page 48, healthcare. We only list the Emmitsburg Primary Care Center. Do we only list them because they have a nonprofit status? I mean, I know we other have, we have other healthcare options in Emmitsburg as well as dental care options. Is there a reason we're limiting, limiting it to one on the comp plan?
We're just putting together all the sources of healthcare in general, just actually, I'm not sure, let me think about that for a bit. I'm sorry, let me think about that.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if we want to include all the amenities that Emmitsburg has to offer or if we're, if, if we're just listing them because they're nonprofit.
Um, we would want to list all amenities, not just the nonprofit.
Even if we say other facilities exist, blah, 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 you know, without going into detail.
Can do that.
Um, civic spaces or that chapter in general, again, where we're listing the amenities. Do we want to include our veteran service organizations? Do we want to talk about, I don't, we may have mentioned it, I don't recall, about the Fire Rescue Museum, the National Fallen Fires, More Fighters Memorial, the Lions Club. I don't know if those are things that we need to include.
I can include those, yeah.
Page 59, energy efficiency. We should put. Page fifty-nine, energy efficiency. We should put that we just upgraded our streetlights. We talked about, we did it and. Somewhere it says here when we replaced the lights. Two thousand thirteen?
Yeah, in two thousand.
Never, oh, that same year, the town replaced all its streetlights in two thousand thirteen. So we should probably put in there that we just updated our streetlights. In twenty twenty-four. Um, page sixty, a couple of questions underwater conservation. Uh, first line, the town implements varying levels of water usage restrictions. Is that under drought conditions or other conditions as well?
Yeah, drought condition.
Drought, okay. And then sixty-three, under our goals. Um, I think we should add senior housing. Under one of our goals, we should put it. I don't know where it fits, but. Um, we, well, probably there, because we put lack of childcare. We should also put address lack of senior housing.
Any further questions?
I want to clarify something I said about page fifty-one. I was only referencing it because that had space for the Seaton Village and Lincoln on the park. But I'm sure you'd want to include it on fifty instead of fifty-one and just push it all forward. That makes sense?
Yeah.
And there was something Valerie just said. Did, uh, is there, I didn't see where they have the. Uh, museum here for the fire department. That's not listed, is it?
No, it's not.
I wrote it down. I don't recall saying it.
It's for the whole Frederick County, so that it ought to be on there promoting the town. I didn't think about, you said other things. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Dan, nothing at all? Okay, everybody else good? No further questions? Diane, I'll give you one last chance.
I'll say one more thing. Um, a long time ago, one of our citizens, when we started talking about the comprehensive plan. Mentioned disaster relief and planning for disaster relief. And I don't think I see that, I've seen that in here yet. Are we gonna maybe put that in at some point?
So for chapter twelve, I think, for for resilient environment, we could put that under there. Vision for a sustainable environment and then disaster planning can be part of that, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane.
Okay, is that all?
For now, yeah.
For now, okay.
Like generous.
Thanks for all the hard work you've been putting in this in jail. Okay, we'll move on to our second bit of old Missus Business, which is the growth reboundry. Does staff want to take it from there?
So, um, an expansion to the current growth boundary is being proposed. Do you want to go to the next slide? This is what we have currently. It was adopted in twenty twenty-one. As an amendment to the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan. And it was included to ensure continuity of developments in general, so. But, um, so this is what we have now. But if you go to the next slide. This is the water service area map. And as you can see, that. Um, a lot of this extends beyond town limits. And if you compare it with the with the growth boundary map. Part of the growth boundary map, um, although water service doesn't, does extend to areas. That are not included in the growth boundary. So, um, same thing with the sewer service area map. Um, it extends to a lot of parcels outside of town limits that are not in the growth boundary. Um, area. So, um, for the town code, uh, water and sewer service can only be extended to areas. That are within town limits. And if a property owner wants to connect to our services, they'll have to. If they're not part of town, they'll have to annex. And if they want to annex, that needs to be part of the road boundary. So, um, so we brought this to your attention because, uh, we had one property owner asking to connect to our sewer. Um, because they're having a hard time getting, uh, approved for a septic. Um, so, and they asked if they could annex, but that that property is not within our growth boundaries, they can't annex. So that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention to, you know, review the current ground growth boundary map and see if you want to change it. And now it's a good opportunity since we're updating our comp plan.
Which property owner was it?
Um, I have to check, but it's on track road. Yeah.
If somebody wants to annex, can we extend our growth boundary at that point? So somebody could annex if we wanted to do that or, I mean, how difficult? It doesn't seem difficult to extend the growth boundary.
It's.
Or do we only do it every ten years?
Well, so ideally, we only do it every ten years. I can tell you that we did it in twenty-one. Um, so it is possible, but it's also not a snap of the fingers type situation. I know, and I think the purpose of doing it in twenty-one was in response to some annexation issues, but it did take several months. Yet you have to go through not the full comprehensive plan process, but you still have to have hearings and it it takes time. So better to address it when it's available to be addressed.
So if it's, this probably sounds dumb. If it's not in our growth boundary or it's not within the Emmitsburg boundary. It's currently part of another town boundary.
It's part of the, well, it's just, it's in the county. So if it's outside of our our town limits, it's in the county.
The county.
Yeah, and this gets a little bit confusing, but, um. Land that is in our growth boundary, but not part of the town is also in the county. That's just land that you have designated as potential for annexation in the future, should you choose. So you're really just creating the opportunity. Um, you are not actually approving an annexation. You know, the the property owner would still have to go through the annexation process, even if you, you know. Determine that you do want to extend the growth boundary. Um, it's just creating the opportunity.
So. To add that portion on track road to the Emmitsburg growth boundary. Do they have to request an annexation or no?
No.
Okay. And then would we be obliged to provide water and sewer to that entire area? If they requested it?
If they annexed into the town. So they, the the first, the the first step is they would have to. Fall within the growth boundary, which is what you would be determining now. The stack, the second step is if they wanted to connect, they would have to annex.
Um, they would.
Yes, that the you have a a code on the books that says you can't extend water and sewer unless you're annexed into the town.
So that property owner who wants to connect a sewer would have to request to be annexed?
Yes.
Anyone else have other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. What, what is the three white? Spots on the map, it's in within the boundaries of the, or Emmitsburg, but they're. They're they're white spots. Is that one the cemetery on? No, that wouldn't be in the cemetery, no.
That's the the farm field over there. That white spot?
Yeah.
That's the farm field. So if you come down Irish Town Road there, there's a whole farm field. That white spot is the farm field.
Was considered not.
Not part of the town.
Not part of the town. And this one out here off of Creamery Road? What is that one?
Not sure what the one off of Creamery is.
And then there's one off this, uh. What is Frayley's Road there? It goes off the, by the Doughboy.
Yeah. Yeah, that that is not part of the town. So there was the question to annex that last year.
Is that because the property owner just doesn't want to or you don't know?
Doesn't want to until they want to develop it. And then they need the water and sewer.
So you have a not, no idea what this off of Creamery Road is?
No, I'm not sure that.
I'm just curious, there's three white spots there.
Yeah.
I'm learning here.
Yeah. And your other big puzzle cut though, white spot, the little one, that's the cemetery.
Okay.
That other one up the top, that's a cemetery.
Okay. I guess they don't need water and sewer, do they?
Well, they need, they need water.
Why?
Because they do water the grounds.
Oh, I guess they haul it in now.
They are not annexed, correct?
They are not part of the town currently. But they do pay the towns a water fee.
Do you have the map, um, that shows the proposed addition to the growth boundary? So it's that light green area in the top left.
That's right, yeah.
To extend it to include that.
Yeah.
And how many homes is is it, do you know, in that area?
I don't know that information off the top of my head, um, but I can find out.
And each homeowner that would want to connect to the water sewer would have to put in an annexation request? Each homeowner?
Not, not each individually. Um, you can, they can come together and file a group petition. I believe. I can look at that while we're talking about other things.
Now, if we were to bring those in, how many water tanks?
It's also another calculation we have to do, yeah.
Well, most of those homes probably have their own water sewer currently. Or for Frederick County.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Just to answer your previous question, you would need a petition filed by at least twenty-five percent of the landowners of that area. So you wouldn't need each individual person to bring a separate petition. You'd take it as a group.
And the, I mean, who would pay for that? I mean, that's a lot of lines and pipes and digging and. Home, I mean, one homeowner to run a sewer line all the way out to.
You could make that a condition of the annexation, that the party seeking to come into the town would pay that fee.
Would they normally automatically pay that fee? I mean, would the town really bear that expense?
Under certain cir-, I mean, a lot of the times you'll have an annexation agreement in this situation. And it, you know, the the classic situation is where you have a developer, right? And it's a, it's a big money, turning over a lot of dirt. So the parties negotiate the terms of the annexation. It would be something, I mean, same principles would apply to this situation.
So you're not asking us to approve that tonight, are you? The the extended growth boundary?
Just let it marinate and.
Yeah. And they're also just, um, part of the reason I'm here. So there are some. Factors under the state code that you'll need to consider as part of approving any growth. Discussion in this plan. So, you know, this this element and some of the other pieces in, I think it's chapter. Chapter five. And so I think staff needs to do some additional calculations to present that information for your consideration as well. So this was really just a heads up more than anything else, I think.
I thought the town always provided the lines down the street and the laterals would have to be paid for by the property owners. No?
I can't speak to that level of genera- generality. Um. Are you talking about in the case of an annexation?
Now, well, yeah, if those property owners wanted to be annexed in and wanted water and sewer. Because maybe their sewage system had a problem. Uh, the town would provide the main lines in the.
I I understand your question. Um. It depends what is already there. So I think, I think based on that map, they're probably. Correct me if I'm wrong, Angela. I think that there are are some main lines out there already. Um, which in this case would make it easier in terms of hooking people up and the overall cost for the annexation.
Yeah, I thought some of them were on sewer because I thought there was a, a, a pump out there. Or whatever we think you call it, a grinder.
A grinder.
Grinder.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the actual situation on the ground out there is. Um, obviously, the map indicates that, you know, we have. Facilities extended out that far. Um, to answer your original question. Not always.
Not always. Depends on the circumstance, what to work out between the property owners and the town.
That's right.
Okay.
I don't recall, is the proposed growth boundary expansion in the comp plan? Or is it the old one in the comp plan? I feel like it's the new one.
It's the, it's the old one that's in the comp plan right now, but we can change that based on what you decide to do, planning commission, yeah.
Any que- further questions on this?
No.
No question.
Will this, will this come before the planning commission, like in the next month or two before we submit the comp plan? Or what, how, what do you foresee for?
Right, so before, uh, we get to the final, it'll be on on the agenda for our next meeting for sure.
No further questions? Any comments from staff?
Uh, feel free to like give me any feedback via email if you have any thoughts, um, about this, but. We just wanted to bring this to your attention, uh, now and if you're thinking about it, if it's something you want to do. Uh, so, yeah.
Hey, last chance, whoever's last chance for any questions. If not, okay. If not, okay, as of seven fifty, April twenty-ninth, the Emmitsburg Planning Commission meeting is adjourned.